Thursday, June 25th, 2020, City Hall Chambers. First item will be to public meeting notice to receive an order filed, the public notice notifying that the Planning Commission will conduct their meeting by teleconference pursuant to the authority of the Minnesota Statute 13D dash 021 due to the circumstances of the Corona's COVID-19.
We should probably have a motion in a second to accept that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second. Everybody's, we're gonna have to call roll.
We're gonna have to call roll. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
And Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Ashley.
Okay, she should.
Welcome, Ashley. Ashley, we were just taking a roll. We just, to call the meeting by public meeting notice due to the COVID-19. And recognizing that, so if you could signify by...
Hi.
We should be good to go here. Dave? Did, uh, Dave, does she need to get a computer or get the agenda?
I have the agenda.
Okay, you have the agenda? Okay, perfect. All right. Next item is gonna be 3.1 to approve the minutes of the April 30th, 2020, minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Second motion.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second for approval. We'll have Dave call roll.
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Aukas?
Yes.
Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes. Motion approved.
Item four is gonna be a public hearing to consider the application of Chris Dalton, Executive Director of the Economic Development Authority of the City of New Ulm, requesting that lots four and five, Block three, and lots two and three, Block four, Milford Heights First Edition be rezoned from R1 Single Family Residence District to R2 Single and Two-Family Resident District. We'll look for staff report.
Actually, um, we're removing the request. We no longer want to do this option. Eric's in construction has been forwarded the feedback from the residents there and is looking to do something else that conforms to the area. So at this time, we are withdrawing the request.
Okay.
Yeah, your motion might be in order then to, um, receive notice that, um, Mr. Dalton asked us to, um, rezonate.
I would move to accept the withdrawal of that request.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion and a second to withdraw the request by Mr. Dalton. Everybody signify by, oh, excuse me, we're gonna do roll again here. Dave?
Golden? Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Aukas?
Yes.
Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
And Mr. Mack?
Yes.
So, item 5.1 is gonna be to consider the approval, the preliminary plot for the Herman Monument Edition. We'll...
Just give me a second.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Tom Roman, 644 Bender Drive. My hearing is not all that good, so was that past business just here to draw the motion for the rezoning?
That is correct, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
The next item is the preliminary plat of the Herman Monument Edition. The applicant in this case is the City of New Ulm. The legal description is part of Outlot 230, 231, 243, 244, and 245. Street address is 14 Monument Street. The property location, it's generally located north of Center Street and east of Bianchi Drive. Deadline for a decision on this particular matter is October 2nd, 2020. The current land use designation for the property according to our comprehensive plan is park, open space. Surrounding land uses according to the comprehensive plan to the north and west is low-density residential, to the south, public semi-public, and to the east, park and open space. The zoning designation for the property is R1, so it's a single-family residence district. The surrounding zoning to the northwest, south, and east is also R1. The current site use is it's a park and site of the Herman Monument. Excuse me. The current area land uses, to the north, we have single-family residential units in Hillside. To the west, we have single-family residential units. To the south, we have Martin Luther College. And to the east, we have Herman Park. No notice is required for this particular action, and there have been no public comments received to date. Description of the plat, the construction of a new parking lot at Herman Heights Park and the realignment of Monument Street necessitated the vacation of a portion of the original Monument Street. The city council took this action at its March 3rd, 2020 meeting. The realignment of Monument Street required the preparation of a new plat due to its having a new location. The city council at its April 21st, 2020 meeting directed staff to expand the area being platted to include all of Herman Heights Park. The new plat would eliminate the use of meets and bounds legal descriptions in two different locations. It would separately designate the location of certain park features and in particular, the monument. And then finally, it would provide simplified legal descriptions for future use. This is particularly the case when we apply for grants or when we have to identify the location of the property rather than having, you know, these outlot descriptions. We just now can use a lot and block description. Much simpler. Um, the plat would consist of two blocks. Block one would have one lot. Block two would have three lots. The alignment of Monument Street would separate the two blocks. The Herman, Herman Monument would be located on Lot three of Block two. The Wurju Distillery and Amphitheater would be located in Lot one of Block two, and those are shown on the preliminary plat. The lots and street would comply with city code requirements. Total platted area is 12.71 acres. The platted size of the lots and street is as follows. Lot one, Block one is .61 acres. Lot one, Block two is 3.88 acres. Lot two, Block two is 6.73 acres. And Lot three, Block two is .89 acres. Monument Street is .6 acres. Code requirements for lots in the R1 zone are 65 feet of width, 125 feet of depth, and 8,000 square feet of lot area. Comprehensive plan designates the property for park purposes. So attached to this report is a copy of the preliminary plat, an aerial photograph of the property. We did not show the location of the new street, and therefore, the lot in the one block is not designated. Um, the, we have a zoning map, and then we have ground level photographs of the platted area. I think maybe the photograph of greatest interest might be the one that shows where the new eastern line of the park will be. And so that's kind of a straight shot across to, to Center Street. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with city code requirements. Two conditions are that they pay the plating fee of $270. It's a base fee of $150 and then $30 per lot. And then provide an electronic file that's platen in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. There are no parkland dedication requirements associated with this plat since we aren't plating residential, commercial, or industrial lots. Then two motions are provided, one to approve and one to deny the request. Includes the staff report.
Thank you, Dave. I'll open it up for any discussion.
Pretty forward.
I guess I like it. It's nice seeing it defined and, uh, in that aspect. Has this been shared with any of the neighbors that are adjoining the property?
Um, there is no notification requirement for plats.
Okay.
Follow-up to, to the, oh, go ahead, Anne. Did you, did you designate Wurju and, um, the amphitheater separately because of the historic nature of it or just because of the positioning and the... It's probably a combination of both.
Okay.
There could be some point in time in the future when maybe there would be a desire to further research, especially the Wurju Distillery. And then we've got, again, a separate legal description that we can use for that. Because I know that through past conversations, working on that with Tom Schmitz and such, they had, they were having a hard time defining where, where public space wanted to use it for recreation, and people wanted to level the whole thing and put it to recreation. And that distinction, for me anyway, is quite important that that still be separated off because it is a historic site, so, okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Kate, did you have something?
Um, just a question. Is there just one residential property that's basically affected by all of this?
Um, there is, there are two residential properties that I would call part of the Rutzlaff site. So there's two residents there. And then there's another residence that has frontage that goes towards Bianchi Clay Circle, but they also have frontage on Monument Street. So they can go both ways.
Well, we'll look for a motion to approve or deny.
So I'll move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
We got a second to?
I would assume that's with conditions.
With conditions?
Yeah, yes.
So we'll have Dave call roll.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Aukas?
Yes.
Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes. Motion carried. Item 5.2 is gonna be to consider for approval the preliminary plot of Ode Edition. So we'll go for a staff report.
The applicant property owner in this particular case is Eric and Casey Bodie. The legal description of the property is Lot one, Block two, and Block two, excuse me, Lot one and two, Block 62 south of Center Street. Street address of the property is 304 South German Street. Property is generally located south of Third South Street and west of South German Street. Deadline for a decision on this particular request is October 16th, 2020. The land use designation according to our comprehensive plan is low-density residential. Surrounding comprehensive plan land uses are to the north downtown, to the west, low-density residential, to the south, low-density residential and public semi-public, and to the east, park and open space. The zoning designation is R2, which is single and two-family residence district. The surrounding property to the west, south, and east is R2, and to the north is R3, which is a multiple-family district. Current site use is a single-family dwelling and garage. Area land uses to the north are residential units, to the west is a church and residential units, to the south residential units, and to the east, South German Park. Um, the, as far as notice is concerned, none is required again in this particular case, and we have no public comments to date. The property to be platted currently consists of two gridiron lots with approximate combined dimensions of 50 by 165. Total lot area is 16,500 square feet. As noted earlier, a residence and garage are located at the rear of the property abutting the alley. The plat would reconfigure the two existing lots into two new lots. The new lots would have the following dimensions and lot areas. So Lot one would be 85 feet by 100 feet, and those are plus-minus dimensions or actually a little bit more if you look at the plat. So there's a total lot area of 8,548 square feet. Lot two has dimensions of 80 by 100, a total lot area of 8,029 square feet. To evaluate the plat, the staff use the city code requirements for a corner lot in the R2 zoning district. And code requirements for a corner lot are a minimum lot area of 4,000 square feet and a minimum, a minimum dimensions of 50 by 80. So in this particular case, both lots would comply with city code requirements. A utility easement area with a width of 20 feet has been provided on the proposed Lot one on the south side to accommodate existing utility services for the existing residents. Comprehensive plan does not designate this property for park purposes. Attachments are the preliminary plat, an aerial photograph of the property, and the photograph includes the approximate location of the new lot line. There's a zoning map and then ground level photographs showing the corner locations. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with city code requirements. Conditions are pay the plating fee of $210, base fee of $150, $30 per lot, and then provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. Then there are motions to approve and to deny. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Open it up for discussion.
Looks pretty straightforward.
Pretty cut and dry. You know, we've got similar a block away, you know, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plot for a Bodie addition with conditions.
A second?
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. We'll have Dave call roll.
Okay. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Aukas?
Yes.
Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
And Mr. Mack?
Yes. Motion approved.
Item 5.3, consider for approval the preliminary plot of the Hyman Edition. We'll look for staff report.
Okay. In this particular case, the applicant property owner is John and Patricia Hyman. Current legal description is Outlot A of the Old Orchard Edition and Sublot A and Sublot D of Outlot 330. Street address is 710 Summit Avenue. Property is generally located west of Summit Avenue, south of Jonathan Drive, and east of McIntosh Drive. Deadline for a decision on this particular plat is October 15th, 2020. Land use designation for the property is low-density residential. Surrounding comprehensive plan land uses to the northwest, south, and east are low-density residential. The zoning designation is R1, which is single-family residence district. Surrounding zoning to northwest, south, and east is R1. Current site use is a single-family residence. Um, area land uses in all four directions, again, are single-family residential. No notice, again, is required. No public comments. The plat would convert one parcel of property into two lots. The total platted area has approximate dimensions of 160 by 614 feet. Total lot area is 98,240 square feet or 2.25 acres. The two new lots would have the following dimensions and lot areas. Lot one would be 160 by 430, which would result in a lot area of 68,787 square feet. That's one and a half acres approximately, or 1.6 acres. Lot two would be 160 by 185. That's 29,416 square feet. That's .67 acres. Both lots would comply with city code requirements. Code requirements for lot in the R1 zone are 65 feet of width, 125 feet of depth, and 8,000 square feet of lot area. So both lots meet these standards and then some. Comprehensive plan does not designate this property for park purposes. Attachments are a preliminary plat, aerial photograph, zoning map, and ground level photographs. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions since it complies with city code requirements. Conditions would be to pay the plating fee of $210, which is a base fee of $150 and $30 per lot. Provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. Number three, pay a parkland dedication fee of $340 for the one new lot. Number four, advise the property owner that there are outstanding utility connection charges of $2,135.47 for water main and $1,648.34 for sanitary sewer main. Payment in full, which is $3,783.81, is due at the time of connection to the utility. So that's to the mains in the street. City Council deferred these assessments back in July 6th, 1993. And then two motions are provided, one to approve and one to deny.
Thank you, Dave. Open it up for discussion, but it's pretty self-explanatory again.
It's gonna be a beautiful lot for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
I had a couple of just FYI questions.
Sure.
So, um, when do we, when is it necessary to have a parkland dedication fee as part of the new lot?
Um, generally, whenever it's, um, you know, it's, it's a new building lot, that's when we typically, that's when we require it.
So the, um, the, um, approval we just did before this is splitting a piece of property into two lots?
Yeah, that was two lots that have been, um, paying, you know, property taxes and...
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of, I guess, the approach that we, that we've taken in the past. We've never required it for, um, for corner splits.
Okay.
Basically, you're just saying because it's finally being developed?
Yeah.
Land that...
And then the outstanding utility connections are, again, because it's brand-new property that's never been built?
You know, the reason that, that the assessments were deferred, I guess, is that, um, they didn't know when the property was going to be developed, so there, you know, wasn't an immediate benefit to the property. The benefit to the property is going to be realized when they hook up. So in a case like that, um, you know, the council will defer if the property owner makes a request. Now, some property owners might say, well, I want to pay it now and get it out of the way.
All right, thanks.
With that utility question, Dave, so the utilities run by, are they connected into the property already?
No.
No.
So we're talking about the mains.
Just the mains.
So it's gonna be the prop, future property owner's responsibility to connect and pay that cost.
In addition to these?
Yes.
Okay. Do we collect interest on, on that because it's been 27 years since development?
Sometimes that's the way the, the agreement is set up, and sometimes it's not. So back to 93, they decided it would just be a flat fee.
More discussion or otherwise, we'll look for a motion?
I move to recommend the approval of the preliminary plot of the Hyman Edition with conditions.
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plot to the Hyman Edition with conditions. We'll have Dave call roll.
Okay. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Firth?
Yes.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Ms. Aukas?
Yes.
Ms. Mako?
Yes.
Mr. Carnets?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item six would be 6.1 to receive council decisions concerning planning commission matters in June of 2019. We'll look for Dave for that. in June of 2019. We'll look for Dave for that.
Okay. At the council's May 5th meeting, so we didn't have a meeting at the end of May, the council authorized with one condition, a side yard and rear yard setback variance. It was a five feet to allow the placement of a detached storage building, and that was requested by Jerry and Carol Meiners?
Meiners.
Meiners, okay. They also at that meeting approved with conditions the application of Brett Meyer, and he requested an interim use permit to allow the operation of a part-time gunsmithing business in a residence and detached garage at 115 North Washington Street. And then finally, and this is a non-planning commission item, but they approved a $250,000 loan to Black Frost Distilling Company for improvements to the property at, I believe it's 201, First North Street, the former New Ulm Grocery Building. At the May 19th, June 2nd, and June 16th meetings, there was no actions associated with planning commission items.
Thank you, Dave. Our next item would be 6.2, Heritage Preservation Commission Activities. We look for Elwood for report?
No items for meeting.
So no items for there for discussion. And we're wrapping up today's meeting. Like to welcome Ashley. This is your first meeting in attendance?
Person, yes.
In person, so welcome aboard. No further business. Meeting adjourned.